Good morning, welcome everybody to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. It is ten a.m. and we're here today for our regular meeting of court. All members of the court are present and the meeting is called to order. Everyone please rise from the invitation by Commissioner Cooper, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner?
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
If the court will oblige me, I'd like to skip down to item number fifteen on the agenda.
Good Lord.
This is introduction of newly hired personnel. We do this once a quarter. We have some new members of the family here, so we'd like to have each of these members introduced. We're gonna start with the Adult Probation Department. Chief Cummings is gonna introduce some new members of the department. Chief?
Judge.
Yes, sir.
We have Leah Hicks. Do you want to stand?
Yes.
I told them they all needed a curtsy. Leah is our mental health liaison. She's been with us since September first. Next one is Desiree. She's been with, I'm not good at dates, she's been with us a couple of weeks.
There you go.
The only bad thing about her, she was trained by Jared, so we're trying to fix that.
We'll be able to fix that. Yeah, good luck.
Senator Martin Kelly, I stand in Jared's office. And we've got Vanessa Robinson. I was gonna tell you, all three work for us, but only two vote in Hardin County. I'm not gonna tell you which two, so it'd be nice to all of you.
Good.
Thank you.
Welcome to Hardin County. Good night, y'all. Next is the Sheriff's Office, and I've had word that the sheriff's on the way, so I'm gonna skip that, and when he arrives, we'll come back to that item. Next is the District Attorney's Office, and Mr. Sheffield is here to introduce a new paralegal in his office. Morning, Mr. Sheffield.
Morning. We have Karen Robinson. She's from Salisbury.
Good morning.
We needed somebody who was working off, so she has five children. She's a partner with Jared. She started as a volunteer, kept coming back, and then was started by the side of the car. This is Karen Robinson.
Welcome to Hardin County. Next is item number sixteen, Special Recognition of Personnel by the Department head for meeting years of service milestones as follows. We're gonna start with Kevin Cummings, the Adult Probation Department Chief of Probation, and I believe Judge Stover is gonna present him with a certificate for twenty-five years of service.
Really love your new office. It's really beautiful.
Thank you, thank you.
Just starting on now. I appreciate that.
We try to.
That's something I aspire to. Kevin has been our probation officer for, I guess, twenty-five years now. We hired him primarily for his charm and wit. But anyway, he has grown in the spirit. I know his father would be so proud of Kevin that he'd just be busting out, you know, certainly miss your dad. And I don't know, how, are you a lifetime resident of Hardin? You vote here? Okay. Alright, but anyway, I wanna present you this certification of appreciation for your twenty-five years of service. How long have you been our chief?
Ten.
Ten, he had kinda like a battlefield promotion because poor Cindy Kane had had the illness and had passed away, so he had been the line officer, deputy, and moved on up to the chief probation officer. He's done a fine job. I'm glad he's adding fine staff. We need the mental health of Leah. Glad, glad, just saw her yesterday in Powder County if we were doing business. But he runs it good at the fishing office, and so proud to have him. So at this time, I'm gonna present you your certification. Put your other hand, there you go. Let's give it a snap.
I'll work this time one more time.
One for one. Good.
Congratulations.
You always don't have to worry about that. Your day will come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge, and congratulations to Kevin.
You know, my staff's here. I said, are y'all here to see if I'm retiring?
Where's the rest of your staff?
That is the word.
We've introduced, we have, we have...
Michelle.
Who else do you have?
Michelle, there's Sharon.
Y'all stand up.
Joe.
At our probation, y'all, y'all stand up there.
Well, I'm sorry.
You know you can be here.
They're working.
Sir?
They're working.
Oh, okay.
That's not icing too much.
That's what I said.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you. Gonna skip the next one until the sheriff comes in and we'll get her up here. She's got a speech prepared. And if she doesn't, you got a little time to finish it. Next is Omitra McCray and Ms. Jones. Is gonna recognize her today for ten years of service with Hardin County. Good morning, Ms. Jones.
Good morning. I don't have a lot to say, but Omitra has been with for ten years, and she's our paralegal counselor and clerk. So thank you, Omitra, for service for ten years.
Congratulations. Chief's not here. Thank y'all very much. Next is Ernest Moffitt. The court just signed his certificate for ten years of service, but Commissioner Pelt said he had work to do and couldn't be here today to receive that certificate in court. But if you'd like us to present that to him in court in the future, just let us know and we'll do so.
I will.
I know you have something to say.
Well, I do. Ernest is my baba. He's a very good employee, and I think today he's up at Hoop and Holler grading their roads that washed out, so he's doing what an employee needs to do work.
He stole him from me.
He gave him from me. Yeah. I imagine you'd like having back, wouldn't you?
Him and about three others, can I get them?
No.
While we are on employee recognition, I don't know if everybody's aware, but we're in the middle of a disaster from Tropical Storm Amilda. There's some confusion there. We call it Tropical Storm Amilda because that's what it was when it made landfall, but when it came through Hardin County, it was a depression. But there are some people that had worked some tireless hours, including nights and over the weekend, and I'd like to recognize all of those at this time, if y'all will indulge me in doing so. First is Misty Sims, Amanda Young, Kathy Parker. Is Kathy in here? I think she's answering the phone at the Emergency Operations Center. She was, she worked there all weekend and was very helpful to us. That was a great idea that Aaron had, having her in the operations center to answer specific questions that people have, that a dispatcher's trained to answer those questions, and she did a very good job. Is Judge Ingram here?
Yeah.
He's in court. But Judge Ingram, this is his first time to handle the logistics chief position for the incident command team and has done an outstanding job with that, and we appreciate him. Judge Brewer and Michelle Brewer have both done a good job. Michelle's here, and Michelle's awesome with recovery, and she's started on recovery before we were even there, and we appreciate that, Michelle. Judge Brewer's done a great job on keeping the website updated with all of the information that's been put out for the response and recovery. Shiloh Creech in the Health Department was very helpful, at least one day, if not two, in the Emergency Operations Center. Sharon Whitley, who could not get to work Thursday, but brave, dangerous conditions to get here late that evening and worked all night Thursday night and all through the weekend. We appreciate her. Captain Mark Minton, who's here, and has his first time, I believe, to handle the chief operations position in the Incident Command Team. What?
Planning.
Planning? That's right, planning. Men's operations. We had a little confusion with that in the beginning, but has done a great job with that, and we appreciate him. Ben Hawthorne, who is not here, but he's probably out being the operations chief somewhere and did a great job with that. Dale Williford, who also was not here when it started, he was in a training conference in Corpus Christi, but drove about sixteen hours to get here and handled the safety position in the Incident Command Team and in the EOC, and has done a great job for us. Trevor Sanford came in and worked the phones at night, starting Thursday night and through the weekend, and had some help with that. And so did Colette. She's not on the list, 'cause she probably didn't get told to sign in. But Colette Nelson also worked that with him, and thank you, Aaron. I knew somebody else came in and helped him, I was trying to remember. We appreciate you, Colette. She's never, to my knowledge, done that before, but she learned how to do it real quick and did a great job, and we appreciate it. Judge Minton, she was in the EOC a few times, but what she really did was go out and paint the roads with some pink spray paint to show the water elevation on certain roads that were flooded, so that we could see how that was receding. And her and, she and Brandy Hart both went out and did that. I think she also brought us some food a time or two and some Sonic drinks, so we appreciate her for that. Mary Huff is the, one of the custodians. She's assigned to the annex, and she came in and worked extra hours at night and over the weekend to make sure that, to clean up after all of us, which was a pretty big task. Michael McConahey, our IT technician, came in after hours and over the weekend when we were down over at the annex and when we all couldn't print and some other issues we had, he came and took care of us, and we appreciate him. Second to last is Sheriff Davis. He was supposed to be out of town and on vacation, but he canceled that and stayed in town and made sure that the deputies and the jailers and the dispatchers and the EOC had everything that they need in order to respond to the incident. And he went over and above to make sure that we were all supported, and we appreciate him for that. Scott, you can pass that on to him when he gets here. Last but not least is Aaron Tupper. This is Aaron's first time to manage a major incident, and I have the utmost respect and admiration for the job that you did. And we have some people here from out of town that he'll recognize in just a minute, and every one of them that have come through here has said how lucky Hardin County is to have Aaron Tupper. So I'm gonna stand and give you a... There were at least three or four times, I'll come back to her, I highlighted on my list, but I had to remind myself three or four times that this is his first time to do this, 'cause he just did it like he, like he's been doing it forever, and we appreciate that. One more person that I missed.
Judge, I think we forgot one.
Go ahead.
Judge McDaniel.
Oh. The second person on my list is Amanda Young. Did I miss you?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Amanda Young, I wanna say what she did yesterday. She went out with a FEMA team, a very dysfunctional team from FEMA and the state to assess damages. They were. They showed up here, they wanted us to provide them a county suburban or something larger so they could all ride together. They said it was mandatory, but we don't have a county suburban, and I informed them of that, and told them if we had those type of resources, we wouldn't need them here. But, and I said it a lot more stern than that. But Amanda spent about thirteen hours with them out in the neighborhoods yesterday, and she showed back up this morning, so I'm glad of that. So I just wanna thank everybody who's helped us. We have a lot of people that came in from out of town. Some of them are here. Aaron will recognize them in just a few minutes. Some of them are, have been assigned to go other places, and a few of them have gone back home. One of them I sent back home. And they've done an excellent job for us. You know, it still amazes me that people will come and leave their perfectly dry home and where no problems are happening, and leave their families. One of them's got a young child, and he's here working with us, and they come down here where there's a disaster going on to make sure that we have what we need. Sheriff, while you were out, I recognized you, and Scott said he'll pass it on to you later. But the sheriff did an excellent job for Hardin County, and we appreciate him. I'm gonna go back to item number sixteen. We're still on sixteen, so I'm gonna go back to sixteen B and let the sheriff come up and recognize Holly Martin for her years of service. She's right there.
You know, they say that every, every organization has a definite some blue that holds it together. Holly is definitely in that role for us, day in, day out, providing issue, the backbone for our office with me, for the health and administrative duties. But just see that everything gets done. It's been a wonderful ten years. We hope there's many more to come. Thank you very much.
I see her boss is coming up.
Not even close.
Congratulations, Holly. Yeah. I was expecting her to reply to me, but she did. And Sheriff, if you want to, let's go back to item number fifteen. The sheriff's got some new employees that he'd like to recognize today, and some of them are here, and I think some of them are working. So Sheriff?
John Davis. John's a new nurse over in the jail. Weston Gatt is a correction officer, jailer. I'm sorry, Weston Tinsley. And you may recognize Weston because he has a brother who's also in the jail, whose father works down at Lomerton Police Department. So family in law enforcement corrections, we really appreciate that. I think we have one more that was not able to make it. Dana Baker is a new deputy for us. Dana, unfortunately, a house took water down in Beaumont, and so he's trying to deal with that. But we definitely welcome you all aboard, and thanks for your service to us.
Welcome to Hardin County. And next time that Dana's available, if you wanna bring him in, he doesn't have to be on the agenda, or we can put him on the agenda, but we'd love to meet him.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And tell him that he's in our prayers. An item that is normally done at the end of the agenda, I'd like to take care of that real quick. Number twenty-five, discussion of any item not on the agenda. We can do it again at the end of the meeting, but I'd like for Aaron Tupper to come up and just give us a quick, or however long it takes, report on the disaster, where we've been, and where we are, and where we're headed.
Alright, so as all y'all know, on Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I received information from Roger Erickson of the National Weather Service, Lake Charles. Roger informed me that we were going to begin some rain from Tropical Storm Amilda. Judge McDaniel and I met and discussed situations, decided to increase the preparedness level to a level three, which has increased the readiness level. The precinct barns were contacted to prepare for sandbacking operations, and the public was notified of potential threat. Throughout the night, we monitored weather and saw reports of localized street flooding, as well as at least one residence in Lomerton inside the city that had received floodwaters. On Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, Judge McDaniel issued disaster declaration for Hardin County due to the amounts of rain that Hardin County had received in the lower portions of the county. At approximately eight twenty-seven a.m., I received a phone call from Roger Erickson. Roger explained that Hardin County was predicted to receive another significant amount of rain from this system. Roger then explained that pine line value at Serra Lake was going to rise to a level of three to four inches less than we had in Harvey. At this time, I met with Judge McDaniel, discussed actions that need to be taken with forecast in order to protect the citizens of Hardin County from death or injury. Judge McDaniel then issued mandatory evacuation order for low-lying and flood-prone areas of Hardin County, including but not limited to Rose Hill Acres, Pine Wood Estates, and Countrywood Estates. Judge McDaniel and I then initiated the EOC and called all the essential personnel into the EOC, which was the first time to be operated out of here in an actual room where we could all talk and not have to run to different offices. And I'd like to thank the court for allowing that building to be built. It was a huge help. During the operations, we conducted conference call meetings with all elected officials, as well as communicate with mayors, police departments, and ESDs for situational awareness and need assessments for response to the event. During the first of the EOC operations, we requested several additional resources to assist emergency through a star request to Texas Department of Emergency Management. The resources were as follows: high water rescue, EMS track team, incident management team, and a hundred TDAT vaccinations. There were several roadways throughout the county that were flooded and closed. All schools were also closed. Several nonprofit organizations opened up shelters for evacuated citizens of Hardin County. Serra Lake opened their community center, Crestwood, Woodcrest, and YYFA opened its shelters. We would like to thank them organizations for assisting the community. We continue to update the public of the current and ongoing situations through Hardin County Emergency Management Facebook page, as well as press releases to local media. As the water started receding, we started gathering information to assist with public assistance, as well as individual assistance. We estimated that approximately sixty homes were inundated by floodwaters. Hardin Jefferson School received flood damage to the elementary gym, as well as athletic facility at the high school. We contacted LJ Engineering Services to inspect Beaver Brook Bridge due to the fact that it was damaged during Harvey and had floodwaters over it once again. The engineer passed the bridge for small vehicle traffic, but said no heavy vehicles would be permitted until he could get a complete inspection, which will happen when the floodwaters recede further. We continue to update state of the damages from this event by submitting situational reports and disaster summary outlines. We had a preliminary damage assessment team yesterday, which were from FEMA and SBA, come into Hardin County. They identified twenty-nine homes that received flood damage. Out of those, twenty-five were destroyed, considered destroyed, but only show affected due to the fact that they did have flood insurance. Three homes showed major damage and one moved. They did not count any of the homes or residents that were owned by businesses. Apparently, there's businesses that came in and bought houses that flooded in Harvey and remodeled them. They would not count those, and they would not count any houses that they seen look to be abandoned. We are still estimating around sixty damaged homes in this event. Going forward, we need to track and report individual damages and infrastructure damages to assist in meeting the cap for the federal declaration. Please report any damages to infrastructure to me, so we can capture it in a report. We're currently working on debris plan to assist uninsured residents of the county in removing debris. We have initiated a request to state to assist in the matter, and should find out more this evening, hopefully. We've also requested debris management asset to assist in planning and execution of our plans. We'd like to personally thank everyone that is involved in response of the event and the requested resources that have assisted in the quick professional response of this Some of the resources we called in was Incident Management Team and John Mattel. He's local. He works for the Forestry Service. He was a, or lead on this incident management team. James Gabriel was also involved on that team as the liaison for the judge and myself. He is the MOB, and John Mattel was nowhere to be found at all. I think he was on the phone outside, actually. Rolando Casas. And then Juan Martinez. These two guys are excellent. They've taught us a lot. Took Mark and Ben under the wing and just showed them everything, and they're leaving us with all their files, everything. So in the event, when we do have another one, we're gonna rock and roll.
Where are they here from?
So I'm from Hidal County, down in the valley. I reside in the city of Sun Point during Hidal County.
Hardin County, South Fudge Island and Brownsville. That's where we're from, and I live in the city of Park.
And what they'll be most remembered for by me is the breakfast they served yesterday morning. Thank you very much. Not just that, but...
Judge, can I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
Just wanna let you guys know, Commissioners, that your emergency management director and emergency management coordinator are top-notch. The staff, absolutely top-notch. We felt like family with them, and we will be beating our hearts here in Hardin County, and we would happily come back if you ever miss us.
Thank you.
Alright, another asset that we called in was a high-water church and rescue team. That's gonna be led by Chuck French. They're out there actually still working. They switched roles a little bit as the water receded, and actually got two more, no, they didn't get two more trucks. They actually sent their high-water vehicles back and started manning fire trucks in case we had any fires since then. Yesterday, they assisted SBA and FEMA in our county, as well as Jasper County, to do damage assessments. There were several locations that without the high-water vehicles, they wouldn't have been able to get to. And then Matt. Matt, say your last name.
Fairnain.
Fairnain. Okay, he's, he's a, we requested him yesterday. He's going to be helping with the debris and several other things. He has welding knowledge. He got in here and went straight to work.
He's an emergency management coordinator from?
Grapevine.
Grapevine. Thank you, Matt. Well, he's staying with us. He's not leaving, or at least for now. Everybody else will be leaving at the end of the day.
Are there any questions?
We just appreciate you, Aaron, very much.
Thank you very much, Aaron.
Sheriff, did you have anything? That's it? Thank you. Alright, we'll go back to item number three. Approval of minutes of the September tenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting as September tenth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting as presented by Glenn Austin, County Clerk.
So moved, second.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Can you unlock it? That's okay. Number four, cancel all registered claims from the September tenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting as requested, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of eight hundred sixty thousand three hundred eleven dollars and eleven cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have two million five hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. In tax pool, seven million six hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, for a total cash funds of ten million two hundred forty-four thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Move to brief.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding annual review and approval of the Hardin County investment policy. Ms. McWilliams?
The law requires that we review the investment policy and appoint the investment officer every year. I didn't change anything in the investment policy. It's exactly as it was when we revised it in March.
Move to brief. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, consider adoption of Resolution thirty-three dash nineteen, reappointing Deborah McWilliams as the county's investment officer pursuant to the Hardin County investment policy.
So moved, second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt Resolution thirty-three dash nineteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seven, discussion and possible action concerning adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty county payroll schedule?
So moved, second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number eight, authorization to pay the county bills as presented. Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. I approve expenditures for September the seventeenth for two hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Expenditures for Commissioner's court today are three hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Attached is a list of additional bills and the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. The total expenditures and transfers are six hundred nine thousand one hundred seventy dollars and twenty cents. Payroll for September the twenty-sixth was not audited prior to today's court meeting due to Tropical Storm that hit the area on September the nineteenth. The unaudited gross payroll is four hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. The total amount to transfer is estimated to be seven hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents, and the estimated payroll cost for the Tropical Storm Amilda is two hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. After court today, I will audit this payroll before it is released.
Move to approve, let's begin. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkland. Angela, on the unaudited gross payroll amount, the printout we have is just a few dollars off.[1794.91] So the amount you read off is a corrected amount, I believe. Is that right? I think, I think you told me you and Debbie had to meet and change the amount?
I did. I did change it. I read the wrong one. Okay, do you want me to reread it?
If you don't mind.
Pass that.
Yeah, ma'am.
I wrote the wrong one.
So this is the right one that we have?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry for that, but the confusion.
If you want to free read those two.
And then we had to revise it right before court, so I read the wrong, wrong sheet. So the unaudited gross payroll is four hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents. The total transfers is estimated at seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and eighty-nine cents. And the estimated payroll cost for the tropical, tropical storm is twenty-five thousand, forty dollars and eighty-eight cents, and I apologize for that.
That's okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Pelt, I believe, moved to approve.
Correct.
Second. Commissioner Kirchendall, seconds. Any other discussion? This was ask the court to remember that twenty-five thousand, forty dollars, because I'm gonna bring it up again on item number eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, considering possi-, excuse me, considering possibly approve order for dispersments and salaries and routine office expenses. This is an order that was created after the new legislation was passed, which will allow the court to no longer have to meet and approve payroll before it is paid out. There's also other routine expenses such as utility bills, travel expenses for employees, anything that's just normal and routine for the court. So the, and the order has a cap amount of twenty-five thousand that allows me to approve up to twenty-five thousand for payment and then the commissioner's court to come back and approve it later. This is the same amount that the county judge had a cap. I think during the entire time Judge Caraway was here and when Angela and I and Debbie discussed the amount, I felt like the amount should probably be set at the same. And if it ever needs to be adjusted later, we can come back to the court for that.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirchendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It also includes in that order that any such like phone bill, utility bill that's about to be late, that we can pay that and not have to worry about any. We just want to make sure they're paid before we have to worry about any late dues. Number ten, consider it possibly authorize a sixty-day continuation of disaster declaration. This is regarding Amelda.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Sorry?
That's okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action concerning the payment of county personnel on nine nineteen, two thousand nineteen and nine twenty, two thousand nineteen who are unable to access the courthouse or place of employment due to flooding.
So moved.
Hang on, just, hang on just a minute. I got it. I need, do you mind withdrawing that?
I withdraw.
I want to read our personnel policy. First of all, the courthouse never was closed during any time that we've been under this disaster declaration. Under our Harden County policy on disaster and emergency closings, item number fifteen states that an elected official may choose to close his or her office at any time. However, until the county judge or designated has officially closed county operations, employees shall use accrued leave, accrued leave, which is vacation, compensatory time and personal leave, or that time will not be paid. So an email was sent out and asked for all of the department heads to submit a list of people that could not come to court. I'm sorry, come to work because they were either flooded in or they lived in an area that was under the mandatory evacuation. The reason that that was asked for is I felt like that anybody who could not come to work because they lived in a flooded area, they were not gonna get, they were gonna have to use vacation time in order to get paid. Just to make it clear, payroll is being processed and we just approved it with Angela and it's gonna be paid. Everybody's, nobody's gonna miss a paycheck. The discussion here and possible action is to whether or not to give people their vacation time back who had to charge vacation time. What I would like to ask the court to do, because we have this list, y'all have not had a chance to look at it. In fact, I have not looked at it thoroughly. Angela and I have discussed it a few times. I think it's important that, and the reason is because I think there might be some people that don't understand or something going on where it's not being handled fairly across the board. My recommendation is that we table this and ask Angela to audit this list, department by department, and specifically speak with certain departments that everybody is, you know, this is kinda like the high school. Everybody knows who did and didn't come to work last week. And let's get those time sheets correct before they come back to court. So our option is to either do that or just go by our policies.
Move to table.
Have motion by Commissioner Pelt to table item number twelve. I'm sorry, item number eleven and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
How many people's on that list? I mean, why, why are we tabling this?
There's at least three people on the list that Ms. Gork brought to my attention this morning that I didn't feel like we ought to talk about it.
Any, any specific names or anything like that?
And I'm not wanting to do that.
Oh.
But I think that that needs to be audited and just make sure that we're being fair to everybody. That's what I'm trying to make sure that we do.
That's what.
Treat everybody the same.
How would we not be treating everybody the same if we didn't? Uh, let me ask you that. Let me go at it like this.
Yeah.
Are there, the people that actually could not come to work because they were affected by this storm? Is the people that work here the ones that we're concerned about now? Are we gonna give them the same treatment as the ones that wasn't affected? That's, that's my question, I guess.
I think that, you know, time sheets, some of them just came in this morning. There hasn't, or late yesterday, there hasn't been time to really look at all that thoroughly. But what I understand, there was some time sheets turned in where it looks like people were here at work when it's known that they were not here at work. So I think that it's best that we go back and get that audited. I don't think anybody's trying to steal time from the county or anything like that. I think we gotta get it done right. There's not a presidential declaration yet, but if there becomes one later, this is gonna affect us to make sure that we have our documentation properly so that we can get reimbursed if, if there's a, if that, if that opportunity arises. And I just want to get it right before we get it approved. So I was gonna ask the court to approve giving some people their vacation time, comp time, or whatever back that they charged because they couldn't get to work, but the paperwork's not done right. So I think we ought to just table it. It's not something that has to be done today. Everybody got paid. Let's table it, ask the auditor to audit that. I'll work with her to do that, make sure that we have a proper.
And I don't have a problem with that at all. I guess it is my fault that I can't get my question across to where I can get a good answer, but.
Well, just ask.
We're, we're not concerned about people that was actually here as far as the reason why we're tabling this, wanting the same treatment. In other words, they get an administrative day too because they were here because they was not, that's not the case here. Is that correct?
No, they, they are receiving time and they didn't have to charge their vacation.
Right.
Right.
But, but our concern is the ones that actually showed to have been here that was not here.
That's a concern, and then the other concern is to pay the people who have, they've taken vacation time. I'll give you one example. There's an employee in the county attorney's office that lives in the evacuation zone that left work to go home to pack up and leave and charge vacation for that. I don't think she should have to.
I don't think so either.
And so that's what I want to talk about and, and make sure we got it right the next time.
All right.
So it's been a motion and a second by Commissioner Pelt and Commissioner Kirchendall. Any other discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, consider and possibly adopt Harden County Uniform Tax Treatment Policy two thousand nineteen effective for two years pursuant to Texas Tax Code, section three one two dot zero zero two C. This is just a date change. Is that right, Laura?
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirchendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider adoption of resolution thirty-four dash nineteen proclaiming September twenty-four, two thousand nineteen as Gift of Life Program Day for month of September, two thousand nineteen as ovarian cancer awareness month and the month of October, two thousand nineteen as breast care, breast cancer awareness month. Is Lauren Bruce here? Good morning.
Hi there.
Anything you'd like to say regarding this resolution that's been presented for adoption?
I just want to thank Commissioner Court and as well as Harden County for the proclamation for the gift of life. The gift of life annually serves Southeast Texas and Harden County. We provide free breast and prostate cancer screenings to Southeast Texas, to women and men. Annually, we provide more than two thousand three hundred breast cancer screenings to the women within Southeast Texas. This year alone, we've diagnosed seventeen women with breast cancer and we have our five K ribbon run coming up. All of our proceeds from our ribbon run do go straight directly to our breast program and back to the women in Harden County. I just want to thank our partners within Harden County, Commissioner Court. I want to thank Sharon Whitley, the Harden County Health Department also for partnering with us.
Move to approve.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirchendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, consider adoption of resolution thirty-five dash nineteen nominating individuals to serve on the Harden County Appraisal District Board of Directors. So everybody will review the resolution compared to the list that was sent to us. It's the last page in this packet and it's part of your packet. There's a name that's not on the resolution. It's the second name on the list and we received word late yesterday that he was not in agreement with continuing to serve. So that's why that name is missing and they'll provide us with a new name at a later date for that position. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seventeen, consider adoption of resolution number thirty-six dash nineteen approving execution of an agreement with Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for purchase of two thousand eighteen Caterpillar, Caterpillar motor grader, Roden Bridge Two with a trade-in of a two thousand fourteen Caterpillar, Caterpillar motor grader as approved in Commissioner's court on September tenth.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eighteen, discussion concerning the amount of rent from BG and Pampas Courthouse Deli operated by Ronald and Robin Doucet. The discussion is that the court had asked me to reevaluate this agreement and come back to the court with a recommendation on rent and by the end of September. And at this time, the Doucets have asked if we could hold off until January to make that decision and I've agreed to do so. So if that's okay with the court, we will not have this item on the agenda for any action until sometime in January. If it's not okay with the court, let me know and I will be glad to place it on the next agenda.
Move to table.
It's this discussion.
Oh, it's this discussion.
Yes. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Number nineteen, discussion and possible action regarding request for approval to apply for the Nacho Menti Program Grant to further improve the department with guidance for the FDA slash AFDO retail standards program. There's no match required for this.
Does it sound like Halloween?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm not a second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty, authorization for county judge to sign the title four E legal amendment modified contract number HHS zero 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 two eight five one zero 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 one six with the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services to recover a portion of costs associated with attorneys representing children and parents in child welfare legal proceedings.
So moved.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. And as a side note, Ms. Walton has reviewed the agreement and approved it as performed. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-one, discussion and possible action to approve a revised job description for the Public Health Emergency Planner for Harden and Orange Counties for the Health Department. Ms. Mendes Alba, what is the change to this job description?
It is, it was for Harden County, but it now includes Orange County as well. The hours have been changed to Monday through Friday, eight to five P M. And under experience education and licensing, education has been changed from a bachelor, you know, from a bachelor or associate's to just an associate's.
Thank you, Ms. Mendes Alba.
Move.
Prove.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-two, results in awarding of bids received for overlaying approximately half a mile on Oak Ridge Drive, three tenths of a mile on Burge Road and four tenths of a mile on Cooks Lake Road in precinct four. Ms. Sims, good morning.
Bids for overlaying those roads in precinct four were opened on September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen at two P M. In the purchasing department in front office, Stacy Eckert, Sarah Guidry and Erica Singletary were present. L D Construction bid two fifty-five a square yard and C N M Construction bid two forty a square yard.
I'm moved to go with the lowest bid.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-three, permission to solicit bids for motor, fuel, oil and lubricants for all Roden Bridge precincts, courthouse generator, jail generator and annex building generator.
So moved.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirchendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twenty-four, permission for county judge to sign renewal agreements for emergency and disaster monitoring services with Thompson and Debris Sites, the Bros and the Hazalices.
So moved.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirchendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-five, discussion of any item that's not on the agenda without taking any action. Does any member of the court have anything they'd like to bring up?
I would say adding on to the volunteers and the help with Amelda. I ran into several ladies who were taking home clothing and bedding and whatever from, from people who were displaced and washing them in their own homes. I don't have any names, but I thought that was just a really great thing for them to do. Actually, one of them, one of them was one of the ones living back in, across Beaverbrook. And she had, she had to get a load of clothes back to some people and we arranged that. But it's, it is just a great feeling to see all of the people come out and help and I, I witnessed that on several, several occasions.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. And I see that Jennifer Harris is here. She might have been here when I was recognizing everybody earlier, but I missed her. But she worked with us in E O C last Thursday and Friday and was very helpful.
Where's she from?
She's from Lumberton. She's originally from Spurgur, I believe.
Fred.
Fred.
And she was very helpful in making sure that we had accurate information regarding the, any dam releases to our north and several other things. That's the, that was the important item that I remember she helped us with, so we appreciate her. If I missed anybody, I'm very sorry. I do want to say Regina Bolton fed us lunch last Friday and it was, there was enough left. We had dinner as well, so thank you for that, Regina, very much. You had your hand raised?
Yes, I wanted to talk about the employee health fare.
Sure.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Just a reminder, this card is that is our employee health fare and we're gonna start at seven A M for all the Roden Bridge guys because we really want those guys to come. We've got a lot of things for them to look through and do. We've got different vendors doing all sorts of things. Right now, we've already started with the cardiovascular screening is going on now. And if you're not gonna be able to be here, please make sure, because this is all the way through Friday and they are over at the Health Department. And they're set up, we have, we have appointments available still. You need to bring your I D and your, and your insurance card. Now, we've had some issues with the flu vaccine because of Amelda and so none of the, none of the health departments all have their flu vaccine checked. So we've got another company that's coming in to do this for us and will be no charge still to the employees, but they will need to bring their I D and their card, their insurance card to get that done at that time. Anybody that doesn't have county insurance or that wants to get theirs later, when we receive them in the Health Department, we will send out an email so they can come to our Health Department and have their shot, their flu shots done at that time, still at no cost.
How much is the cost gonna be if they get their health, their flu shot from the company and they don't have insurance?
We're not having them do it. They're waiting, wait till, if they don't have insurance, they're not gonna do it then.
If they want to, what would the cost be?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five per person?
They can do it for free if they just wait a couple of weeks, you know, because we are gonna get them. It's just a matter of, everything's backlog, so.
Okay. All right.
But yeah, please, if you, we've, these things that we've had done, the E K Gs that the Lumberton Power Department does, as well as the cardiovascular screening, it's been proven to save lives. I mean, we had some people last year that they sent two doctors, two hospitals and it saved their lives. So it just takes twenty minutes to do these, so we, please, we issue, we really urge you folks to come and do that and just, because it's just gonna be charged to your insurance, so please come and do that if you can.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anybody else have anything?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirchendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.